All right. Good evening and welcome to this April 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with our roll call. Supervisor Blundy.
Here.
Supervisor Ross.
Here.
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor McCartney will not be able to join us tonight. Today is his 50th birthday, so if he's watching at home, happy birthday Supervisor McCartney. Enjoy yourself.
He is not watching at home.
I'm so ashamed. All right, community announcements. Reminder, during this portion of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement or contact the township at admin@lmt.org to request a special announcement to be added to the agenda. The Yardley Farmers Market will be at the community center, the first and third Saturdays of every month until April 25th, so basically this month, from 10:00 to noon. The Environmental Advisory Council will be hosting a rain garden lecture presentation by Jeff Gall on Saturday, April 12th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the township building right here. For more information or to review the flyer, you can check out the township calendar on our website at lmt.org. Please join us for ribbon cutting ceremony sponsored by Soft Surfaces for the basketball courts and playground at Memorial Park and 1950 Woodside Road on Thursday, April 17th at 2:00 p.m. There will be food trucks and music and various basketball drills, I could use those. For more information, you can check out the calendar at lmt.org. Kim Rock Group will be sponsoring a free community shredding event in the pool parking lot at 1050 Edgewood Road on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. For more information or to register, check out the event on our website calendar at lmt.org. We have a lot of announcements. Lower Makefield Township is hosting our annual Arbor Day celebration this year on Sunday, April 27th, with a tree planting recognition ceremony at 10:00 a.m. at the corner of Edgewood Road and Oxford Valley Road. A reception will follow at the LMT Township building right here, immediately following the Arbor Day celebration. Join us at Five Mile Woods, 1305 Big Oak Road, for our Earth Day open house on April 27th, 2025, from noon to four. Lower Makefield Community Fund is generously donating 500 pollinator plant plugs, so come and pick up your free plants and support our local pollinators. The Environmental Advisory Council, along with Birdtown, Pennsylvania, are hosting an Arc in the Park event on Saturday, May 3rd, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Memorial Park, 1950 Woodside Road. For more information or to review the flyer, check out the township calendar on our website at lmt.org. And last but not least, the Environmental Advisory Council is hosting their Styrofoam collection event on Saturday, May 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the township building right here. Along with your clean white styrofoam, you can also bring natural corks, clean pill bottles with tops, and batteries. If you have any questions, guess what? You can check out the calendar on our website at lmt.org or reach out to the township at admin@lmt.org. All right, item number five on the agenda is open public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have any comments about anything that has nothing to do with agenda items, please come up to the podium, state your name, and whether or not you're a township president.
Thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment. My name is Marty Burkhafer. I'm a retired physician and pharmaceutical industry executive. My wife and I reside at 75 Lavender Drive in the Carriages section of the Regency at Yardley Development. I have a contingent of my neighbors with me tonight so that we can make you aware in advance of any construction permit applications, of our objections to the proposed development of 136 Old Oxford Valley Road, which is a roughly three and a half acre tract of C-3 zoned land, which abuts a number of our homes on Lavender Drive, Cypress Way, and Fern Drive. A development proposal for the construction of 15 or 16 age-restricted townhomes on this property is making its way to the Board of Supervisors through the local planning and zoning review process. We appreciate the difficulty you have managing the finances of Lower Makefield Township and the opportunity for increased tax revenue that this proposal presents. However, we strongly believe that the potential for a relatively small financial gain from taxes must be carefully weighed against the potential for losses by our residents and our community at large through a reduction in our quality of life and our property values. I want to bring three specific things to your attention. First, it's our understanding that the developer will require at least two variances to circumvent township ordinances on C-3 zone properties. We're concerned that any precedent in this regard diminishes the quality of housing to be built and negatively impacts our property values. Secondly, based on research we have done, we believe that the property at 136 Old Oxford Valley Road is historically significant, and this needs to be a consideration in determining the final disposition of the land and the existing farmhouse. My neighbor, Mr. Jack Cullen, will follow me with a more detailed summary of our findings and concerns. Third, and most importantly, we have major concerns about the ability to manage stormwater runoff resulting from development of the tract. Those of us on Lavender Drive in particular already experienced substantial accumulation of standing water behind our homes following even a modest rainfall. Indeed, throughout the carriages, we see retention and detention basins fill quickly and drain extremely slowly, if at all, after a rain. The soil throughout our community obviously drains very poorly, and the addition of more impervious surface is not going to help matters. We would expect that the township engineer carefully reviews any stormwater engineering plan brought forward by the developer to ensure that it anticipates revisions as they occur to the stormwater management ordinances currently being contemplated in Lower Makefield Township. Finally, it has been our contention for months now that this property should be preserved by the township as open space. As you well know, the southern part of Lower Makefield is greatly underserved in terms of available open space. The three and a half acre parcel already abuts an open space area owned by Lower Makefield Township, making it an attractive acquisition target. The historic nature of the property further enhances the attractiveness of the opportunity. So I want to thank you for your attention. For your records, my friends and I are going to leave behind written copies of everything we say tonight, as well as some illustrative photographs of our groundwater complaints so that you can see for yourselves what we're living in. Thank you very much, and I'll turn my podium.
In case you weren't aware, and I'm sure you're following this, but in case anyone else wants to, that proposed development will be on the zoning hearing boards meeting on April 15th, right here at 7:30. I figured, and that's where you should really start to voice your opinions in front of that board, and I do believe the township solicitor will be participating on behalf of the township, so we're fully abreast of that situation.
Thank you. Appreciate your attention. I'm Jack Cullen, a retired business owner. My wife Susan and I live at 99 Lavender Drive. Previously, we were at Bonswallow Road for 15 years, so we've been residents for 20 years. We're sharing information regarding the historical significance of the famous Satterworth family and their land, including two photos you'll receive. The old photo is from the history book, The Five Mile Woods Preserve, that I'm sure you're all familiar with. William Penn owned the three and a half acres in 1690. He sold it to William Dark before William Satterworth Sr. purchased it in 1764. The current house was built in 1786 and per Dr. Helen Hines was the famous family's main homestead. What about the Satterworth family? In that history book, the family is written about on 80 of 280 pages. That's 30% of a history book. No one else comes close, including William Penn, on just 12 pages. So why is the family famous? What did they do? They did tons financially for the education in Lower Makefield and Bucks County. William, a teacher throughout Bucks, achieved notable fame in the Commonwealth's history as one of its very first earliest poets. The family played a significant role, not only in Pennsylvania history, but also in the founding of American Quakerism. A quote from the book, "They were part of a unique religious organization, the Quakers, that became the first to call for the abolishment of slavery in the 18th century." So they deserve 80 pages in a history book. The National Secretary of the Interior defines four ways something can be historically significant. Tells a story about the past, it's tied to a famous person, it has special design or craftsmanship, it helps us learn about history. These criteria can be applied at a national, state, or local level and be considered historically significant. In this case, likely two of the four criteria are met. By definition, only one is required for something to be historically significant. We propose that the best use of the parcel is for the land to be purchased by the township for open space. Let it be dedicated, dedicated to and in appreciation of the Satterworth families' significant contributions to our township, our county, our Commonwealth, and our country. Memorialize it with a monument or a plaque on the three and a half acres. We note that in August 2009, the LMT Open Space Plan update was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. This specific parcel was identified on page 76 as being rated A1 by both the Environmental Advisory Council and the township engineer. The A1 rating identified it as, quote, "as a high priority property and among the most vulnerable to development." It considered it to be, quote, "among the most beneficial properties for the township to acquire based on ecological value, proximity to existing green open space, and aesthetics." In 2009, our tax dollars helped pay for that open space plan update that is still in effect. In 2024, the vote passed for $15 million in additional open space purchases. Now the fate of that historic parcel and the Satterworth family legacy rests in your hands, the leaders of the LMT. The LMT Open Space Plan supports our belief and action by the Board of Supervisors is perhaps long overdue, but it's not yet too late. On page 280, to close this history book, Jeff Marshall correctly wrote, and I quote, "Those who preserve the land for future generations are heroes." Please implement the council's recommendation for that three and a half acres to become open space. Thank you for your time.
You want me to? I can handle it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Board of Supervisors. My name is Haseeb Abdurrahman. I am a representative of the founder, of three founders of ZBETA Foundation. Primary reason why I'm here is, we have since 2005, when ZBETA Foundation opened, we said we want to come in and partner with whomever we need to partner with. We have since day one been 110% supportive of the Lower Makefield Township Police. They have done, before we arrived, and continue to do, an outstanding job. As I was talking to one of the officers just a couple of minutes ago, I was just thinking, you know, these officers put their life on the line every single day. They put that badge on, they put that uniform on, they don't even know if they're coming on, male or female. So we should be forever cognizant and mindful of that and be supportive of them. They only hear the bad news or something negative, never hear anything good about the things that they do. A couple of weeks ago in New York City, there was an Imam, is equivalent to a rabbi or a Christian minister. You know, someone from out of nowhere tried to kidnap this Imam. He was miraculously saved from being thrown into this car by some of the parishioners among the community. What is my point? This is one of many reasons why we, from our community, need the support of these fine gentlemen and ladies. gentlemen and ladies who are officers, because you just don't know. We living in serious times. You know, we have to lock our doors because we don't know who's coming on the edifice, on the campus of Zubeta Foundation, because you got some people here that are whacked out. So I just wanted to mention that right quick. Congratulations. When we heard, I was walking in yesterday, I said, I'm requesting, I'm going to request a meeting with the new chief of police. And lo and behold, I go in, and the new chief of police, Kelly, is walking in with the two top men with him, you know, Lewis and Jason, Jason Brain. Met him yesterday. The superintendent or the chief of police was so kind, he said, well, you know, we can come in, we can sit down now. I said, no, I'd rather go by the protocol. I want to, because I didn't expect to really see the chief of police. I'm running into him. So it was wonderful. So we do have a meeting set up with him one week from today, and I wanted to give a shout out to, they don't get any kind of shout outs. Jennifer Walker, who is the assistant to the chief of police, you know. Continues to do an outstanding job. Captain Jason Brain, who I've known for years. Robert W. Lewis, deputy chief. Like I said, you know, we at Zubeta Foundation are honored, and to speak, going back to Jennifer Walker, that is, she has a team of about, I think I noticed right quick, let's say, seven or eight secretaries. And they're so quiet, efficient, professional, always with a smile. They go in there day in and day out, they get the job done. Nobody recognizes that. I mean, the chief comes in, whether it's the former chief or the new chief. Congratulations to all of them. And last but not least, I want to congratulate the chief of police, Kelly, for his compassion and sensitivity that I noticed right on the spur of the moment. He didn't know me, he didn't know what I was there for, but Captain Brain knew, and Robert W. Lewis knew. So it was beautiful, and we hope to continue this on into the future. Like I said, we are 110% supporter of the police department and the Lower Makefield Township Police Department, in my opinion, and I speak as well as a member of Zubeta Foundation, one of the finest here in this area. So I thank you very much, and have a good evening, and once again, congratulations to the chief of police, Kelly.
Hi, good evening, honorable guests, respected officers, and esteemed community members. My name is Abdul Kadir, and I have the honor of serving as the president of Zubeta Foundation. As one of its founders, I take great pride in witnessing the impact of our organization has had in fostering unity, service, and compassion within our community. Today, I stand before you with immense gratitude to congratulate our newly appointed police We commend your dedication to public service and your commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. On behalf of Zubeta Foundation, I extend our heartfelt support and best wishes as you embark on this important role. For those who may not be familiar with us, the Zubeta Foundation is a faith-based nonprofit organization dedicated to serving our neighbors through education, social services, and community outreach. Located right across the Charles Bay Middle School, we strive to be a center of peace, learning, and interfaith initiatives. Charitable program or civic commitment to building bridges and strengthening our collective community. To the leadership and supervisors of the department, I extend my sincere appreciation for your continued service. I have here some contact cards, and I encourage you to stay in touch with us. We at Zubeta Foundation stand ready to assist in any way we can. Once again, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Any other public comment? Thank you so much. All right. Chief, you're up. So I know you did this the other day at the judge, but since you're here, we figured we'd do a ceremonial swearing in. But before we do that, and I got to carry this big book over to you, I just want to say to everyone here, everyone watching at home, we're very excited and pleased to have Chief Kelly join us in Lower Makefield. His extensive experience in both municipal transit law, law enforcement, combined with his commitment to community engagement, departmental accountability, fiscal responsibility, we're going to hold you to that one, and data-driven policing make him an excellent choice for our police department. He's got a great reputation in this community, and we're very happy to have him here. So with that, we'll do a swearing in over by the table here.
Oh my gosh. Yeah, y'all need a mic.
Aye.
Aye.
Joseph B. Kelly III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties of chief of police.
In Lower Makefield Township.
In Lower Makefield Township.
Bucks County with the deli.
Bucks County with the deli.
I'll try and keep this very brief. I know we're in a very, very crowded room, and it's very hot, so I'll try and keep this brief. First, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, they're all over here now, for their faith in me. Next, I'd like to thank my family, Danielle, Beth, Emily, Joe, my father Joe, Gina, my brothers Sal and David, and all my friends and family who assembled tonight. I've had, I have friends here from the New Jersey Transit Police, from the Artleyboro Police Department where I served the last 10 years, and my new family now in the Lower Makefield Township Police Department. I know the Imam said it, but I want to say it again. Look to your right, these are the men and women that, and to your left, some of them, that patrol 24 hours a day to make Lower Makefield a safe place. Chiefs generally get the reward and recognition for a lot of the outstanding work that gets done, but it's done by these men and women, and I'm in your awe. The deputy chief, Lewis, Captain Brain, and Lieutenant Bradley, our command staff, thank you for holding this down. Thank you for the outstanding work and your leadership. To my fellow chiefs, and there's a number here tonight, I'm looking around, both from New Jersey and from Pennsylvania, thank you so much for coming. To my former mayor, Mer Harding, thank you, and everyone who came out, I'm just touched. Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you, I look forward to working for you, and I look forward to guiding this police department into the future. Thank you so much.
Meanwhile, rescue 45 crews secured a water supply and deployed hand lines to extinguish the fire. Additional firefighters assisted with ground ladders, ventilation, and secondary searches. The rescued female, who's here with us tonight, and two other occupants were transported to a local hospital for smoke inhalation. She was later transferred to a specialty hospital in Philadelphia where she was treated and has thankfully since recovered. Tonight, we'd like to present a couple of lifesaving awards to the folks that we mentioned. First off, if, there you go, guys. If Mr. Chamberlain could assist me here. Keith West and Randy Mount are awarded the lifesaving award for their heroic action in rescuing the male occupant. Firefighters Michael Bradshaw and Quentin Jones awarded the lifesaving award for their bravery in rescuing the female occupant. bravery in rescuing the female occupant. And we have additional recognition of the Newtown Fire Company for their assistance with Lower Makefield Township. We appreciate all you do. I know you guys do this as a day job, but it's a phenomenal job that you do, and we thank you for your service. And gentlemen, thank you. You've had no reason or necessity to do what you did, but you stepped up in a big way, and you saved someone in our community, so we can't be thankful enough to what you did. So, thank you again. We can slide through this.
Nothing clears out of room like audit.
Yeah. So, when we walked in tonight, I saw a full house, and I was certain it was for this next agenda item, which is the presentation of the audited financial statement for the year end, December 31st, 2023, I believe. Tim from Zelenkovsy Axle Row is here?
Yeah, yep. Tim, if you could come up.
If you can just say ZA, too, by the way.
Z... Thank you.
It's a lot easier.
Yeah. It's his nice way of saying I butchered that pronunciation.
You're not alone.
All right. Now, as you begin, the gentleman in the back that you can't see through the window is probably going to give me a thumbs up whether or not he can hear you, so just be careful to keep the microphone close to your...
Is that better?
As long as he gives me a thumbs up, you're good. I think that's good. All right.
I think closer.
Closer. Okay. Better? All right.
Thumbs up. There we go.
Okay. My name is Tim Mara from ZA. I'm a partner with the firm, and I was the partner on the 2023 audit of the township. I'm just here to present the results of the 2023 audit. The audit is in the review stage, and we anticipate issuing the 2023 audit within the next couple of days. But here to present to you guys the results of our 2023 audit. So, we are expressing an unmodified opinion on the township's financial statements for 2023. What this means is that, based on our procedures, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. As a result of our audit procedures, we did identify some items specifically related to bank reconciliations and financial reporting as it relates to the township's golf fund that we will be communicating a management letter over those items. MEGA and her team are aware of these items, and I know based on discussions with her, they're actively addressing those items in 2024. And based on those discussions, I don't anticipate, once we get to the 2024 audit, those being an issue. But just full transparency, letting you guys know. As we get to some of the financial results for the township, the governmental activities of the township ended the year with a net position balance of $100 million. The $100 million is comprised of net investment and capital assets of $80.9 million, restricted net position of $7 million, and unrestricted net position of $12.1 million. This is a $0.5 million decrease from the prior year, and that restricted $7 million is restricted for your special revenue funds. The business-type activities, which is essentially the consolidation of the sewer, pool, and golf fund, ended the year with a net position of $17.5 million. The $17.5 is comprised of net investment and capital assets of $14.3 and unrestricted net position of $3.2 million. This is a $2.8 million decrease from the prior year, and majority of the decrease is the result of the spending down of the sewer proceeds that are still residing in the sewer fund. Onto the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the township. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $3.6 million, which is a decrease of $1.1 million from the prior year. That $3.6 million is comprised of non-spendable fund balance, essentially which is like your prepaid assets, as well as unassigned fund balance for the remaining. Total revenues for the year are $14.6 million. This is $622,000 over budget. Total expenditures for the year ended at $16.3 million, which is $200,000 under budget. Excess revenues over expenditures for the fund during the year, it was a deficit of $1.7 million. Now, this is prior to the transfer in of $655,000 from the golf fund, so that knocks that $1.7 million down that you'll see in the other financing sources and uses. Onto the business-type funds. The sewer fund ended the year with a net position of $3.3 million, and all of that $3.3 million is unassigned. Change in net position, there was a decrease of $2.3 million in net position for that fund during the year, as I mentioned earlier. That made up most of the $2.6 for the business-type funds. The fund ended the year with total revenues of $300,000, which was mainly just investment returns, and total expenses of $2.6 million. The community pool fund ended the year with total net position of $361,000. That $361,000 is comprised of net investment and capital assets of $753,000 and an unassigned net position deficit of $392,000. There was a change in net position, which is a decrease of $425,000. The fund ended the year with total revenues of $1.1 million and expenses of $1.5 million. This also includes depreciation expense, which was a non-cash transaction, but for reporting purposes, in accordance with GAAP, that does get included in there. And lastly, onto the golf course fund. The golf course fund ended the year with a net position of $13.8 million. That $13.8 is comprised of net investment and capital assets of $13.5 million and unassigned fund balance of $231,000. The year-over-year change in net position was a decrease of $73,000. The fund had revenues of $4.1 million during the year and essentially expenses and transfers of $4.1. I mean, they're rounded, so... And that's just the high-level presentation of the financial activities of the township and the funds for 2003.
MEGA, do you have anything to add? Okay. Any supervisors have any questions or comments? Go for it.
So, I ask a certain number of questions real quick every year as sort of an audit of the auditor process.
Happy to answer them. It's over here.
Did you sample inter-fund transfers in the audit?
Did we sample?
Yes.
We viewed the inter-fund transfers. We saw that they balance out. So, from a testing perspective, when they balance, inter-fund transfers as well as due-to-do froms, so that's what our testing surprised though.
Okay. Did you notice any contingent liabilities the board has not previously discussed or disclosed?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Are you comfortable with the balance sheet, and if there's any immediate risk to the long-term safety of the residents of Lower Makefield financially?
I'm comfortable with the balance sheet, and from my perspective, there doesn't appear to be any issues.
And then, are you happy with the funding of our pension liabilities as based on what you see with peer municipalities?
Yeah. So, your entity-wide net position sitting at, you know, plus $90 million, close to $100 million. I mean, most townships, even counties, I mean, we're... Our firm, ZA, we're across the state. We focus on local government, nonprofit. Most entities are sitting with a deficit entity-wide because of how they've handled the pension and OPEB. And Lower Makefield, but I had to kind of double-check, make sure that I was looking at things right. But yeah, I guess short answer is yes. It seems like you guys are...
Sorry, I have to ask these questions?
No, no, it's fair.
And they're good ones, and so...
I don't mind.
Yes. And then... And I'm glad you're sitting next to our CFO, who's been with us now for six months? Four! It seems longer. Okay. In a great way, yeah. So, the stuff that was outlined by the auditor, you're already making traction on the golf accounting procedures and the bank reconciliation. And the bank reconciliation, is that 100% solved? Because I know you had previously started on that before the audit was complete.
Correct. There's some... So, in '23, we had a little bit of a difference, but most of it's actually the bank being higher than our system. That's the reconciliation piece. So, it does flow through. We're going to try to take care of it in '24 or '25, depending. But as of 2025, we're on track. We're on time. Everything's clean from a bank reconciliation standpoint. As far as golf, we're also... We double-checked '24 after some of the findings in '23 to see if the same thing occurred. It was just... It wasn't anything, you know... It was just more from a financial standpoint of how things were journal-entried in and posted. It wasn't anything, you know, no negligence from the golf side or anything like that. So, actually, me and Stephanie, who is handling the accounting piece now, are going to be meeting with... You guys can't hear me? Okay, sorry. We're going to be meeting with the golf team on Friday to just double-check and make sure we're on the same page with our financials, and then moving forward, everything's... It'll continue to be on track.
Excellent. That's all I had. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just want to confirm that we're going to have this on the website before Lori gets up and asks. That's a yes?
Yes.
Yeah, we're happy to.
We can put this on the website, and then, once the actual financial statement is ready, which should be in the next few days, we'll also post that on the website, so you can get the full picture.
Excellent.
And thank you for working through your cold. We appreciate it.
Yeah. And what's the schedule for our... This is '23, so when's '24 coming up?
So, we're ready for...
Thanks for asking that question. We appreciate that. So, the Board of Supervisors is also interested in that issue, Tim.
Sure. For the '24, yeah. Yeah, we're going to... You know, it's tough, because right now, we're getting into our busy season, but, you know, we've already set up the share file for 2024 with MEGA, have communicated, you know, what we'll need. I mean, we just got through 2023, so it doesn't really change significantly from year to year unless there was a significant transaction. So, her and her team are going to start uploading stuff to the share file, and we're going to start getting through this stuff when we can, as soon as we can.
And that'll catch us up, and we'll be off to the races, right?
Correct. Yep. We're ready. We have all of our... Everything's clean and close for the most part on our end, so it's just the audit part.
Glad to hear it. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Go get some rest, MEGA. All right. Item number nine, the consent agenda items. If anyone on the board would like to pull any of these items off the consent agenda, please let me know.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items as is. So moved.
All right. Get a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. I don't believe there are any items under community development this evening?
There are not, no.
We all received the engineer's report. Are there any questions on status of any projects or anything else? The engineers in the crowd, if we need to ask any questions? All good? All right. Mr. Fazia, you're good?
I'm good as you are.
I like that. I like that. Good answer. Item number 12 is, we have a nice meeting tonight.
We do. We don't have quite the crowd for this public announcement, but yeah. So, again, this is an item that the Township Board of Supervisors was briefed on previously by the Environmental Advisory Council. You had authorized submission of an application to be considered or designated as a tree city, which is a national program that recognizes communities that invest in green infrastructure, specifically in terms of trees. And so, we just wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge the work of township staff and perhaps more importantly, the work of our community volunteers that have made this a priority for Lower Makefield Township. So, just wanted to, again, sort of publicly report back to the Board of Supervisors that we have received this designation, and we'll continue to do the good work that we've done as it relates to maintaining sort of our suburban forestry here in Lower Makefield Township. So, just wanted to make mention of that.
Appreciate that. It's great news to hear. And as a reminder, Lower Makefield Township is hosting their annual Arbor Day celebration on Sunday, April 27th, with a tree planting recognition ceremony at 10 a.m. at the corner of Edgewood Road and Oxford Valley Road, with a reception to follow at the Township Building.
Thank you very much.
All kinds of good news tonight. All right. Item 13. I'll announce it slowly. Item number 13 is Public Works. We have a couple items for consideration this evening.
Good evening, yes. Item 13A, I have before the Board for Consideration Award of Engineering Bidding and Construction Management Inspection Services related to the 2025 road program. We did solicit RFPs from four engineering firms, and staff's recommendation is to proceed with Penone and Associates at a cost of $55,650.
So moved.
Second?
Get a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the board? Derek, I'll just... You're comfortable with the terms and conditions and the contract that is written?
Correct, yeah. Most of the firms, again, design bid is a lump-sum fixed price for design bid. Of course, construction admin inspection is always estimates, you know, depending on how construction goes. No matter what scenario we went with, even if their hours are under, we're still under all the other, you know, respondents in terms of total cost.
What was the range on that one?
I'm sorry?
The range on proposals?
$55,650. Next one was $75,080.
I think $90,000.
$90,000 and $170,000.
Wow. $170,000?
Yes.
Three times is... Wow, okay.
Correct. So, again, if their hours are a little low on construction inspection, we're more than comfortable with the rate that they have in there to support the staff as needed.
Okay. All right. So, we have most... Yes?
Just in case, because Penone will be new to the road program, we have strategically asked the engineers to look... asked the engineers to look at roads that would benefit from the use of placement of reflectors, cat eye signals, whatever, and put them in the ground, things that light up. Will you make sure that they do that?
Correct. Yeah. Once we get this award to them, we'll sit down and have a little pre-construction or pre-design meeting with the team and, you know, tell them what we're used to seeing out of the engineers in design.
Thank you.
It's been a great addition to the roadways.
Skylar, we have to get this in Skylar.
Yes. So motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four zero.
Before you, is item 13B, I think it's...
It's worded incorrectly on the agenda, so I would defer to Maureen in terms of the ability to act on this issue this evening, or whether we need to defer to...
We are awarding the contract. It is not, it was already previously advertised.
It was previously...
It was previously advertised.
Properly advertised?
That is correct.
Yes. So the board had authorized advertisement at a prior meeting under a consent agenda item, and so, in addition to that, it was legally advertised as required. So I don't know if you, just from a sunshine...
I think in abundance of caution, I would...
Just wait until...
I'd defer, yes.
There's no schedule need to do it tonight?
No, I believe the contract was written to start in May. I think it was in May. So we can hit it the next meeting.
Push it to the next meeting?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Consent agenda for the next meeting?
I don't know if you want, we only got one respondent, is my understanding.
One respondent. Our typical, again, this is more of a good housekeeping measure, that we can use liquid fuels for, it's required to be bid. The one respondent who has been doing our signal maintenance and repairs, Armor &amp; Sons, was the respondent, so.
So we'll officially vote on it next meeting.
That's not a problem, yeah.
Okay. Anything else this evening?
No, that's all I have. So do you have any questions?
Derek, I do have one question before you leave.
No, no worries.
Let's say it together. Can you give us a quick update on the repaving of Woodside Road and the bump bumps?
Yep. No, no worries. I did, so they, joint toll bridge commission needed to revise some pricing with their contractor due to 2025 prices. They did, as of March 12th, I did go back to my emails, they did ask till the end of the month of March. So I did just check for an update to see. But I am on them constantly to get the contract out there to pave. And they understand that they need to get done, and they're willing to do it. So they just got to get it done.
Thank you.
Item 13, 14, sorry. Supervisor's report.
That came up quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The minute shall reflect that supervisors present this evening met in executive session immediately preceding this Board of Supervisors meeting to discuss an employment matter, various real estate matters, and a number of litigation matters. My report is as follows. Stormwater management ordinance will be properly advertised. It's going to be advertised this week. Actually, it's being submitted for advertising this week. Will be advertised next week as required, and will be posted, and will be before you, our next meeting on April 16th, for a vote. In addition to that, I just hope to meet with Farmland Preservation Corp. soon to discuss issues related to Patterson Farm. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Item 15, supervisor reports. I have nothing this evening. Supervisor Lewis?
I have nothing this evening as well.
Supervisor Ross?
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Barney, enjoy yourself on your birthday. And Supervisor Blondie?
Starting from, just kidding. Nothing.
All right. We don't have any discussion items. Any other business? I don't believe we have...
There is not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. No appointments or reappointments this time around? Hopefully we'll start, we'll be doing, for those under item 18, for those listening at home, we are going to start, we have 10 or 12 folks to interview for several open positions that have applied. So thank you for applying. Keep an eye out for an email from our admin to schedule something over the next few meetings. Item 19, this is additional public comment on non-agenda items if needed, similar to, what item number was that? Item five earlier in the meeting. If you do have public comment on a non-agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name, whether or not you live in Lower Makefield Township, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. If we need to do some follow-up, we will do so. Podium is open. All right. No one in the audience? Anyone online? I don't see the red light on in the back. All right. With that, item 20 is everyone's favorite agenda item. We'll adjourn. Have a good evening. Thanks for coming out.